Yep. Okay, and I think we're live finally. Thank you all for your patience. We apologize for the technical difficulties. Of course, it always goes better in the demo. So my name is Kevin Moody, and I am the chairman of the Government Affairs Committee for the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. And I want to welcome all of you to our 2020 Tulare City Council Candidates Forum. This forum is brought to you by the Tulare Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the Tulare Advanced Register, the League of Women Voters, and the Seroptimus International Tulare Chapter. We, let's see, so this will be a series of questions and answers that the questions were developed by the Government Affairs Committee, along with our other sponsors. And we spent a lot of time developing these questions. We anticipate, since there are so many candidates, we will still get through, we're hoping, eight or nine or 10 questions. Prior to that, each state, each candidate will be given a one-minute opening statement. Then we will go through the questions. I've randomized the order as, as best I could for the answering sequence. And then we will have a two-minute closing statement. So a little bit more of the ground rules. This is a forum, not a debate. And as such, we ask that candidates don't refer to other candidates in this forum. And, and as because that's in place, also there's no rebuttal. So those two ground rules in, let's see if there's anything else I need to mention. Oh, timing. So about 30 seconds into your one-minute answer, we're going to hold up a paddle that says 30 seconds, and then another one at 15 seconds, and then one that says stop. We have the ability to mute you. We prefer not to do that mid-sentence. So, very good. Now, we're going to go with candidates' opening statements, and I'm just going to go straight down the list that I have. And if you are ready for, this is a one-minute opening statement. Jose Sagala, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, sir. Floor is yours for a minute.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for organizing this candidate forum. It gives voters an opportunity to hear from the candidates in terms of their past experience and what they plan to do for our district. I'm honored to represent the first council district as not only its council member, but the mayor. I was elected in 2016 to represent our neighborhoods on the council, and in 2018, I was selected to be the 39th mayor of the city. You know, our district encompasses the west, southwest parts of the city, and is comprised of working-class neighbors that are family-oriented, diverse, and hardworking. I'm proud to be an ardent advocate for safer neighborhoods, parks in open space, schools, programs, economic development, and addressing the homeless issue. Over the last four years, as council member, mayor, I worked hard to fight for our working-class families, supported men and women in the police and fire departments, balanced our city budgets while protecting city services, and worked to address homelessness and push for economic development downtown.
This is Sagala. Thank you so much. Also from District One is Clara Bernardo. Clara, the floor is yours for a minute.
Hello, and thank you for having me. My name is Clara Bernardo. I am a Tulare lifelong resident, born and raised here, mother of four, married for over 27 years. And basically, I am running to just make a difference in my district. I am, this is the first time I've ever ran for an office, but it's not the first time I've ever been involved in trying to make a difference in my community and for my district in itself. Started the TYA program, a football program, for the youth, because there was such a need to just get kids active. Also started a foundation that is to help for tutoring that is needed, and some scholarships and different equipment for kids. Basically, I've always been involved in some way or another, and I just figure that this is another chance for me to even be involved more with the city.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Clara. Now from District Three, we will start with opening statement from Carlton Jones. Mr. Jones, the floor is yours for a minute.
Good afternoon, everybody. First, I would like to say that I am on duty, and this, we are in the middle of fire season. This is number, day 10 of 11 for me. So in case you hear a loud noise and a crazy tone, and I'm getting up to leave, just know that I'm, I'm working. That being said, I'd like to thank everyone who formed together. And I would also like to say that I too am a lifelong Tularian, I'm born and raised here, graduate of Tulare Western. I worked for Tulare Fire Department for eight years before I transferred to Fresno. Two years later, I was elected to represent you on the council. Since then, I've been working hard to represent my district and the ideas of the entire city. I want to continue to do that. I think there's a lot of work to be done, and I think we have some great people running for council that I would love the opportunity to work with.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Also from District Three is Steve Harrell. Steve, the floor is yours for a minute. Steve is muted.
There, you're on, okay. Can you hear me, Kevin?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for having me tonight. Like everyone else, with a number of people here, I'm a second-generation Tularian. I started my public safety and public service when I was fifteen years old, and I've never stopped since that day, and I'm 73 now. Tulare is a great place to live, always has been. We have some issues that we need to address, and I think with our council, we can address them. We've made the changes necessary to improve the life of everyone here in this city. As far as we, there are issues here like in the other district. And what we do in District Three carries over to the entire city. The homeless issue, budget shortfalls, infrastructure, all of those are issues that need to be addressed and will be addressed by the council. And I look forward to having an opportunity to be involved in that. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. From District Five, no particular order, just to go straight down my list, and we will start with an opening statement from Patrick Isherwood.
All right. Good evening, Kevin, Member of Commerce and members of the audience. I'm Patrick Isherwood, candidate for Tulare City Council. And like most everyone you're hearing, is I've been involved in the community for many years. And I think one of the things I really enjoy is promoting Tulare. We have a wonderful community. City of Tulare is very much a vibrant place where we have health care, we have a great police force, we have beautiful parks, and we have wonderful neighborhoods. And that's really, I think, what we need to get back to is a very much of a good in-sync promotion of Tulare. And I think with that is what separates me is over 25 years of experience of working on systems and boards of that of the Planning Commission, the Redevelopment Agency, our Tulare Transportation Board, the experience to come on board this city council and work as a team to take our community forward. We've had a few distractions over these last few years, and it's really time to move forward. And I think issues that you're going to hear about discussed tonight of that related to the homeless, related to traffic, related to public safety, our fire department funding, all those dynamics are important. And I think what we need is some new leadership and a person with the right experience to jump in there and hit the ground running. And I'm Patrick Isherwood, and that's why I'm running for city council.
Thank you, Patrick. Next up in District Five, Mario Flores. Mario, the floor is yours for a minute.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm so thankful to be here with you guys and be amongst all these great leaders. This evening, I am running from District Five because I want to see city transformation and city revival. I'm definitely, my focus is public safety, economic development, and community. And I believe if we focus on these three areas, we're going to see our city transformed and allow this city to be the city that we all know that it can be. So that's why I'm running.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Next up for District Five will be Greg Nunley, who may join us later. He's not here yet. Courtney Oliver, we're ready for your opening statement in District Five. The floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. My name is Courtney Oliver. I was born and raised in Tulare as well. I moved away in 1996, and I returned in 2018. I graduated from Tulare Western in 1993. I have nearly 18 years of local government experience at the county level. And I believe that my experience with the government makes me a great fit for city council. I've been around the government for many years. I look forward to growing with Tulare and bringing change to Tulare, celebrating with Tulare. I believe that it's a great family-oriented city, and we need to just continue with that. Even with future growth and a larger population, I think that we can still hold on to that, but still, but, but also grow as far as with our ag industry and other industries that are strong in this area. So that's why I am running, and I feel I have a lot to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, in District Five, we have Grady Dodson. Grady, your opening statement.
Thank you, Kevin. And again, thanks to Tulare Chamber of Commerce and as well as the League of Women for hosting this great event and the chance to display all the candidates here to the public and get a chance to know us a little bit better. Again, my name is Grady Dodson, and I'm running for the District Five spot on the city council. As said before, as many others, I am a longtime Tularian, born at the local Tulare District Hospital. I attended both high schools, finished up at Tulare Union, and then went off to college in Florida. So I had a great time, came back after school and started my family and planted my career. I have spent five years with the local Tulare County Government Affairs Office with Health and Human Resources, as well as worked for the last 13 years in healthcare administration. So I have a number of things to bring with it. My main focus is to be transparent and accountable as a city member and to bring the city, namely the District Five reps, to bring that back to them as well as represent our city.
Thank you very much, Grady. Okay, now we're going to head into the questions. And I'm happy to repeat questions if any of you need it. But the first question is for Mr. Jones. We'll start with Carlton. What are Tulare's biggest strengths as a community?
Well, there's a number of strengths in Tulare. I would say the biggest one is the way we handle adversity, and we, we come together, especially in, in times where other cities will fail. Tulare has shown time and time again to be resilient and survive. There are a lot of cities that during the market crash in 2009 that had felt bankrupt, laid off a ton of employees. I'm proud of the, of what the city of Tulare did, especially when we taxed ourselves because we wanted a better quality of living. Measure I, I was proud to be a part of that, and we beefed up our police department, beefed up our fire department, and put money into our streets. So what makes me very proud of Tulare and being part of it is, no matter what we go through, we stick together and fight through it.
Mr. Harrell, you're up next.
I couldn't hear you there for a minute, Kevin. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. I think the one word that really in your question says it all, community. That's what Tulare is. We're a community. We're a community of people, of churches, of businesses, friends, and neighbors that always come together in a time of need. We showed that when several years ago, we dealt with a racetrack south of town that was certainly questionable. We came together on that. Community came together on taking care of the hospital issue and getting rid of a corrupt business group that was there at the time, and now we have a viable functioning hospital. We've always come together. No matter what the situation is, we may not agree, but at the end of the day, I think we can shake hands and all agree that what comes first is the community or the city or the town of Tulare, to make it what it, what it can be. And there's so much more that we can do for the city, and that's, that's what we really need to do.
Thank you so much. Next, also from District Five, Courtney Oliver. Tulare's biggest strengths as a community?
I believe that Tulare's biggest strengths, one of their biggest, our biggest strengths is our family, how family-oriented we are. Tulare still has that small town, small-town feel, regardless of the growth that it seems to, seems to have had over the years. I also believe that the citizens of Tulare are really good about supporting the industries that have the greatest impact to not only our community, but across the nation, because some of our businesses here, they do, they are a help to other areas, as far as the product that they produce and these products that be, that are being shipped other places. So I think being family-oriented and supportive of one another, as far as the family level, is, is a great thing, as well as the industries that we have here in Tulare.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. And Grady Dodson, if you would take that same question?
Yes. Tulare has a lot of good things. A couple of things I would like to, to echo, and it does sound redundant and don't want to give the same answers, but as previously said, we do have a sense of community. We do have a sense of working together. And this is a town that is very safe and clean for us to raise our children and give them a great start, just as it's done for myself. At the same time, I'd like to also highlight that we definitely have one of the best school systems around. Test scores have been up, and the support through our educational system here with our Tulare City School District, as well as our Joint High School District, has been great. Obviously, we've grown, opened up new schools, new high school, and done great things. Lastly, I would like to add is that we probably have one of the best faith communities here. Our support of our Christian churches in this city is unparalleled to what they're doing. And it's something that goes be, goes without saying, that we have a community that loves people, prays for people. We pray for our law enforcement, fire department, which we are praying for Carlton as he serves. Thank you for doing that. But we just have that great praying community. So continue to good work.
Thank you very much, Grady. And finally, from District Five, Mario Flores.
I believe that one of the biggest strengths we has as a city of Tulare is our level of compassion that we have towards others. I think when we see a need in the community, we all rally around that need and find solutions to, for those needs. Recently, over this year, distance learning hit as hard as a community. And I think our community came around, around 25 homeless young students that needed a safe place to study, a safe place to learn. And like a lot of our faith-based community came around that, or a lot of community members gave of themselves to help these 25 students. And so I love to see that about Tulare, that we are a compassionate community that rallies around each other.
Thank you, Mario. I said finally from District Five. We have one more candidate from District Five. Patrick Isherwood, you want to take that first question?
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, all right. Yeah, as noted, Tulare has a lot of wonderful strengths. And I think really where it comes from is that component of everybody in the community coming together. We have a lot of, we have a great history of ordinary individuals exceeding extraordinary achievements throughout Tulare's many years. And with that, though, is I think the Tul, the city of Tulare is where a place where a person can come in as a youth and live here throughout your eldership. We have, as noted, great schools. We have great health care. We really have a great staff. And with that is, it's really an economic hub as well. It's a great place where we have freeway, we have the roads, water, and sewer. A lot of those issues that you see going and plaguing throughout the Central Valley, we don't have here in Tulare. They need to be tweaked, they need to be worked on, and they need to be sustained. But that's another thing, we come together. And that sense of community is a part of communion, where we talk about churches, great place for your faith, great place to prosper and live, but also to come together, where we help out places in need, like Grandma's House, or we help out the senior center. That's what Tulare comes about too, is also in our youth sports. So there are many of those factors.
Sorry. I don't know if you can see our timing paddles or not, but.
It's all good, Kevin.
All right. Now, we're going to jump to District One. And Jose Sagala, if you would take that question, please.
Sure, thank you. I agree with a lot of folks, you know, our foundation of a family, the people, our community are one of our biggest strengths, our history, our traditions, our willingness to grow and evolve and become a better community are very big strengths of ours. And I'm very proud to have played a role in that in the last four years to help build upon our, our strengths, to work on dealing with saving our hospital, you know, boosting our economy or through economic development, and working very hard to make sure that we continue to, to evolve and become better and continue to build upon those strengths that make us unique in the Central Valley as a great community to live in.
Thank you, Mayor Sagala. And finally, for District One, Clara Bernardo, would you like to take that question?
Hi, thank you. You know, our biggest strengths, I love seeing the fact that the kids that were in our football programs and our sports programs are now giving back to, as they're older, back to their community, their coaching, their contributing, you know, their helping in any ways that they can. And that just kind of talks about how, you know, it, it's, it's one of those type of things that because they received and they seen it given to them, and they're wanting to do it back, you know, for their kids. And the fact that we have, I mean, so much here still to even evolve and to grow, you have kids that are going off to college, and they're still coming back to work for Tulare. We have a great agriculture system. We have so many businesses that are growing and stuff, and they're wanting to come back. You know, they're not staying away. They want to come back to this community because it's that small-town feel with big-town options.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me move on to our second question now. And with this round, we're going to jump in first with District Five. And first up will be Courtney Oliver. So here's the question. Given the criticism of divisiveness on the council, what is your plan for greater unity and civility on the council?
Sorry about that. It's mute, it's muting and then unmuting. My plan is pretty simple, just to let it be known that divisiveness will not be tolerated. I personally would not be contributing to it. And I definitely would not encourage that of my fellow council members. It's unproductive. It won't help us to get anything done. It'll do nothing but stagnate us even more. So I think just going in with the right attitude and, you know, speaking with my fellow council members and saying, hey, let's do things this way. Let's, let's get along. Let's be professional. Let's have some class. Let's have some coothe. It's pretty simple. We just, we just have to just, you know, work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Grady Dodson, same question.
Yeah, I think that, and I'll say this, I think that's probably been an undercurrent from, from our board. It's, it's a big reason why I've decided to run for, for the fifth district. I believe that what it is for me individually is to be an example. I've been a mentor in many situations at church and youth sports and, and even a mentor in my job and profession. So when you're mentoring people, you have to first live the example. So it's easy to point a finger at someone and say they've done something wrong, or they've said something inappropriate. But it's how you handle that situation, is how you handle difficult times. And just because I disagree with you doesn't mean I need to be disrespectful to you, nor do you need to be disrespectful to me. So my grandfather used to give me a little word of wisdom, and it was very simple. It's, it takes two fools to fight. And if you take yourself out of that equation, you only have one fool out and one person not willing to fight. So I think it's really just coming back to our accountability as individuals and as leaders. We set the tone and example for all of our community to watch us.
Thank you, Grady Dodson. Mario Flores, same question.
That's a really good question. I, I think one of the things, being on a council, definitely is a hard thing to do. So I definitely respect our council now. And one of the things that I would do to bring unity with, would be getting to know our council and being able to work with each other. I think if we don't know each other and we can't build unity amongst that, I think we're all leaders in a sense, and being able to know that we can't be offended easily. I think that's one of the things that I would do, knowing that I want to get to know my council, work with them, pretty much build a community and a family around that council, because really, if we can't do that amongst each other, how can we lead the community? So that's something I would focus on.
Mario, thank you very much. Patrick Isherwood, same question.
Yeah, the, the community really, I think, absorbs this question because it's an issue driving our, our viewpoint of the council. I think a lot of folks in the community are embarrassed by the council's actions, embarrassed by the fighting, embarrassed by the name-calling. And part of it is really, I think, a component of how you would act maybe in your boardroom, or how you'd act on the job, or act at your church, compared to how you act while you're on the council they're representing. Let's face it, unprofessional comments of attacking people on Facebook, making derogatory comments and accusations towards people, it's, it's very difficult. And I think what we have to do is have people with a professional background that can reach across the table, shake hands, let's sit down, and address this way in a conduct that we would address professional business. And this community wants that. The community wants that strength and having that confidence that their council is working together and getting along and not going rogue and creating wild situations.
Thank you, Patrick. We're going to move now to District One. And first up to answer that question is Clara Bernardo.
Well, you guys kind of got my answer the last time I was in a forum. And basically, I think that everybody just kind of needs to hear each other out. And one of the biggest problems is that, you know, there's, there is passion in what everyone on the council is trying to say and what they're trying to stand for. So I can understand that. But it's kind of coming to terms that we need to sit down and try to understand each other. And I understand the fight to want to get your point across. It's how we're getting it across is the biggest problem here. And we're not taking the time out to listen to the other person and what their views are, what their goals are, and where they're wanting to see this go. And maybe to take more time out individually and maybe have somebody come in and work with. I mean, we've got five different personalities. And there's a reason for that, because, you know, the city wants, you know, they're, so they want to know everybody's opinion, or else the city would just be run by one person. So it's a good thing that we have the five council members, but somehow, we need to find a way to work them all together.
Thank you, Clara Bernardo. Now we'll move to District, oh, we're still in District One. Jose Sagala, would you like to take that question, please?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing. I, you know, I worked hard when I first became mayor two years ago to bring together the city council, to get to know each other, to know the staff. It's very difficult when two of them didn't show up and provide that unity. You know, as mayor, I've been able to demonstrate that we can get, take care of business. I'm part, I am proud to be part of a working majority that moves forward a number of things regardless of our different opinions. And I think it's important that we, that we work to, to know each other and to respect each other. And that's something that I'm very proud of, bringing as mayor, is trying to bring some professionalism, some respectfulness to the council, to be a leader that can hold up his head high at the end of the day and say, you know, we work together to get things done. And sometimes it is difficult. It's difficult when people are not respectful and don't adhere to our, our creed, our policies. We have rules in place that guide us. And so we must maintain ourselves very professionally, know that we represent the community, and do our best to represent the people.
Thank you, Mayor Sagala. Now we'll move to District Three, and we'll start off with. Now we'll move to District Three, and we'll start off with Steve Harrell to answer that question.
Thank you, Kevin. The very first thing is do unto others. That says it all. Yes, we all have different opinions, we all have different ideas. Nobody's saying that anybody's opinion or idea is better than the other one. We have to bring them all together, we have to sit down together, discuss them, and at the end of the day, make a decision that's best for the citizens, the people of Tulare, and those who visit Tulare. Walk out, shake hands, and it's good again. You can't have animosity, you can't have other people unaccomplished. And then the citizens don't get anything that they deserve, they don't get the kind of services they deserve. We used to have a reputation of people like Elmo Zuma, Simmons, Bob Mathias. Now we're known on the East Coast as, you know, Tulare, all the problems they've had out there over the years. That's, we need to change that with cooperation on the council.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Carlton Jones, same question.
You know, I'll say the, when I first got elected, some of the best advice I got was that when five people are thinking the same, four people aren't thinking at all. And what came with that lesson is an understanding that our differences of opinions serves a purpose. And sometimes things get very passionate in the meeting setting. I take it very serious when I tell people that I'm going to represent you the best way I can, I'm going to fight for Tulare. And then every time a fight comes up, we have to say, oh, you can't be passionate or you can't represent the way your district feels. And that's just not the case. I've been on council longer than anyone on the council currently. I've served with 10 different people. I've watched people get very passionate and at the end of a vote, we all come together and just represent our district. So I would hope that people understand, especially on other boards that argue all the time, that that's part of it, but just represent your people and keep your promises.
Thank you, Carlton. Now for question three. And with this, we're going to start off with District Three. Carlton, you'll be first for this question. The question is, with potential budget deficits on the horizon, especially considering the World Ag Expo being canceled, what should the city council prioritize in the budget?
Well, you know, we have certain priorities that will never change, and that's our public safety. But when it comes to the, you know, the struggles that our entire world is going through, it's not just Tulare, and we know that the pieces of the pie are getting harder to divvy out. I think our goal should be growing that entire pie. And that's why I fought real hard to keep our money in economic development. And it was one of those things I was very passionate about when three council members cut it. If we want to grow as a city, we are going to have to invest in communities. I think we need to attract businesses to go to our west side, and then we need to control what type of businesses go to different parts of the city. But we need to grow the entire pie, and that comes from economic development and encouraging businesses to come here. Like Amazon just went to Visaya and we were on that shortlist. I think we should have really went after them and recruited them hard to come to Tulare.
Can't hear you, Kevin.
Someone, I got muted. All right. Steve Harrell, same question, and I'm happy to repeat the question if you want.
It's fine, thank you, Kevin. Development, that's the key. The city has to grow, but at the same time, we have to consider, are we going to be able to sustain and support the growth, groundwater, things of that nature? I think if you talk to different people, you're going to get different priorities for the city. As I've walked the neighborhoods and asked people what their issues are with the city, I've gotten different answers from everyone. But I agree with Carlton, public safety is the number one priority. We have to be able to provide the people the law enforcement protection and fire protection that they deserve in this city. And it only will happen if we get more resources, more income coming into the city. I know when the dreadful city manager, at that one point, we had more money in reserve than any other city in the state of California, and that was due to his leadership. We can do that again.
Thank you, Steve Harrell. Grady Dodson, same question.
Yeah, as rhetorical as it sounds, number one, public safety has to be at the top of the list. So to make sure that we're adequately funded at the police and fire department as well as our waste managers to keep our city clean, obviously has to be at the top. But in lieu of everything else, we all don't know the potential blowout or the fallout from COVID-19 and what it has on our city budget. But obviously losing the expo, the act show, as well as the fairgrounds, you know, we didn't have our county fair as well and other things that have brought revenue to the city. So we definitely need to brace for that. And this is where, for me, being a healthcare administrator in an area of budgeting, is where we got to get real creative, you know, cut losses where we can, minimize certain things, be great conservators of our budget spending, and obviously look for any type of additional income that we can get through economic or city development. So those things will be very key going forward. And again, that's what I'm here to do.
Thank you, Grady. Quick housekeeping question before we move on to Mario. Can all of you see the timing paddles that we're holding up?
Yes.
You can, wonderful, thank you so much. Okay, Mario, you're up, same question.
Two things that I would focus on is definitely economic development and public safety. Economic development and really focusing on young entrepreneurs that really want to come and build something special here in the city of Tulare. As a council member, I would definitely focus on supporting them and making sure that they feel at home. And also marketing our city better than we have. I think people need to know what Tulare is all about. And so marketing is big, we need to be able to reach a whole new generation that we haven't been able to reach. I believe once we do that, we're going to be able to bring in some special people. Public safety is a big thing as well because we need to keep our, as our city is growing, we need to keep it safe and make sure that a lot of the drug issues that we're seeing rise up, gang issues that we're seeing to rise up, we need to do something about that, make sure that everybody in our public safety areas are being supported. So that's what I would do.
Thank you, Mario. Patrick Isherwood, looks like he got disconnected. Patrick, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, you were there for a second. I'll come back to you, Patrick. I'm going to go now. Oh, you're there, okay. Go ahead, Patrick, same question.
I think they got me added back in.
Okay, yes, you're in.
Yeah, the budget priorities on the horizon are going to present some challenges. With the losses noted with the Ag Expo and loss with COVID, but COVID impacts to our businesses. We're going to have to come together and I think look at everything, really from all budgets of all areas, look at our income, look at our expenses. And I think really with myself of a good understanding of government finance and working on our entity boards and being involved with the city budget over the years, as well as my experience of overseeing a $200 million construction budget and staffing budget of $10 million. I think my experience has bring me to the table to work with our department heads, work with our represented councils and groups. And we're going to have to make those hard decisions and hard choices, but we will surely support public safety. We're absolutely going to stay on those priorities of the basics, fire, police, water, and roads.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Courtney Oliver, same question. We can't hear you, Courtney.
How about now?
Good.
I think that we definitely need to concern ourselves with the public safety, that we're going to have to make sure that that's in the budget, of course. Safety is very, very important. We also need to focus on growth. But we also need to find a way to get the extra funds that we may need. And the last time I checked, we did have a grant specialist position that was open. So hopefully by the time we get ready to go into 2021, that position is filled and is ready to go. We will need grants, I'm sure, because of the hit that all, you know, cities have taken due to COVID. So we're going to have to make up for that in some type of way. So I think the best thing is safety, economic growth, and focusing on getting extra funds through grants.
Thank you, Courtney. Mayor Segala, same question.
Grady, thank you. It's the first time I hear that we're on a shortlist for Amazon. And I'm pretty involved in a number of things, so this is the first time I'm surprised to hear that. But for me, the priorities are public safety, preserving our city services, and working on economic development. You know, we are in a deficit and I started with the council support, a budget committee that meets every two weeks to review our budgets, our revenues, our expenses. So we're on top of understanding what's the impact that COVID-19 is having on our community. I've also, last couple of years, I've got the council to support my effort to place a cap on Measure I. You know, that was an extra revenue that was being spent, but we were spending more than we were bringing in. So I was very glad that we put a cap on our expenditures on that. And it's something that we need to look at to make sure that we continue to look at the deficit, see how the impacts of business closures and everything that's around us is impacting. And I'm working hard on behalf of the people to stay on top of it.
Thank you, Jose. Claire Bernardo, same question.
I don't think anybody's really going to know what the long-term effects of this COVID is going to do. But we really need to kind of focus on getting everybody to shop back in our town. We know people are still buying stuff. I mean, but it's tons of Amazon shopping, it's online shopping, it's all, basically the money's going elsewhere. We need to get them to shop back here in Tulare in itself. I mean, there's no reason, we have great, you know, choice, we have great stores, we have the same options as online, but we just need to keep the money here. We need to keep the tax money here. So we need to kind of back our Tulare Police Department up and getting them more officers so we can make the city safer. When the city's safer, not only will our residents want to shop more outside of online, but we need to draw these attention for other people to come to our city and shop also. I mean, I know that I have friends that still go out of town to go shopping because it's just more attractive or it's more fun. Why can't we have those same options here? Basically, if we can draw more money in here, it might help a little bit with the COVID effect.
Thank you, Ms. Bernardo. Okay, the next question has to do with homeless. You knew that was going to come up. What are your thoughts regarding the homeless shelter location and the best process to be used in determining the location? We're going to start with Mario Flores.
So one of the things that I would do, especially with the location that was presented to us down on Cross, I think a lot of, there was a lot of confusion on the location because of the lack of communication with the lighthouse and sharing what is actually happening with the lighthouse. I think one of the things that I would do is really work with the lighthouse hands-on, being able to work with Dave Clevenger. They have a great staff out there and they're doing amazing work, and they're wanting to definitely transform the community. They have a special heart for our homeless, and I believe that when we meet our homeless at the margins, they eventually transform who we are as a community. And I believe, like I said earlier, when we see an issue or a crisis, when we come around each other, come around that crisis, we will find solutions for those issues. So working with the lighthouse is something that I really want to do, so.
Thank you, Mario. Patrick Isherwood, same question, please.
Yes, the homeless issue is of its enormity. And I think the public's patience has completely worn thin. We have two approaches, which is one, I think our community wants to know we have compassion and we have services available for those who need help and those who want help. And the second part of it is the citizens want to know that we're going to enforce the laws. And the two can be separated and the two can be done. I think the issue with the shelter is we need to collaborate with the county and other cities and address it regionally. And perhaps that means if the best location is in the county or if it's in Visaya or others, we need to address this regionally, pull our funds together regionally. And that City of Tulare, this responsibility shouldn't simply lay on our shoulders. We can work with the Homeless Alliance, we can work with the State of California, and we need results, and we need to drive our decisions based off a results-driven path. And I think people together want to know that. And I think the police chief in supporting me, Patrick Isherwood, plays a role in that.
Thank you, Patrick. Courtney Oliver, same question.
Okay, I think we're ready now. My first thought with the location of the shelter is, hopefully, we're just looking at it in a way where potentially it is a temporary location, not something that we're looking to be a permanent solution. And I say that because we're going to be learning as we go. So we have to be open to possibly changing the location at some point if it's not working for us. But as for now, I think our first commitment should be to safety, not just for the residents in the area, but also for the homeless as well as the resources that we can easily get to them, whether taking the homeless away from the shelter to the resources or the resources coming into them. I think it's really important that we make sure that that can be easily done with no kinks and everything can just run smoothly because we need to take a look at what their individual issues are because each homeless person is different and there's different levels to them. So I think, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. Grady Dodson, same question, please.
Yes, so as I had walked the district over here, District Five, and getting to all the district, it's homeless is probably the number one issue. One of the comments that I've heard over and over again from a lot of the constituents in this district was, if we do something, if we have a lighthouse rescue mission, if we're building this, how do we know we want to attract more homeless to come in from the other areas? So number one off the bat, I definitely think that the combining of community partnering has to come into effect. So the shelter itself by itself is not the solution, we all know that, at least for those of us in the professional ranks of healthcare and mental health. So we need to address the drug issues, we need to address the mental health issues that plague the people. We also need to address the job issues. We know that some people have financial issues as to why they're homeless. So there's a number of contributing factors, but to make sure that we band and pull together will have to be the key. The other thing that we need to do is best demonstrated practices. Since this is a newer problem for our city, we definitely need to go out and visit some other cities who have been dealing with homelessness for a while, who've had success, bring those best demonstrated practices back to us so we can serve our folks and keep everybody safe.
Now on to District Three. Steve Harrell, same question, please.
Okay, first of all, homeless issue. It is extremely emotional. And when the issues are emotional, people don't think clearly when they try to address and solve the situation. We ran through the same thing with the Santa Fe Trail. Everybody says, great idea, we need it, but not in my backyard. Once we sat down with a number of people, we worked it out and we got on the Santa Fe Trail. Several cities put together a list of things and locations where you don't put a homeless shelter and locations where you do. Unfortunately, Tulare was successful in meeting every one of the criteria for places you don't put a homeless shelter on Cross Street. Fairgrounds is a possibility. At least from the fairgrounds, they're going to make money on it. But the bottom line is, it's not a place just for them to sleep at night. We need to provide them the services that they so desperately need, the mental health, the drug, the alcohol, job placement, and things of that nature. That's what we have to provide the homeless in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Councilman Jones, same question, please.
All right, I have to start off by saying hello to Girl Scout Troop 2579. I'm late to get into a meeting with them. With that being said, a homeless shelter is simply a place With that being said, a homeless shelter is simply a place to herd homeless people, and we don't need that. So I definitely wasn't for the two areas that they wanted to build homeless shelters in the city of Tulare. On Cross and on West Street and West Tulare is definitely not a place to have a homeless shelter at all. What we need are rehabilitation centers, mental health centers, and we need to partner with our other nonprofits, our churches, and let them connect to the people that know them best. It's harder for, it's harder for someone to buy a house than it is for someone to gain a house by homeless. Tulare has to be the place where it's easier to find help than it is to be homeless.
Thank you, Carlton. Mayor Segala, same question, please.
Thank you, Kevin. First of all, I just wanted to say that I'm just as frustrated as all of our residents in Tulare that we can't do much more on the homeless issue. You know, many people may not know that we have our hands tied by many court rulings that have nothing to do with us, that preclude us from doing a number of things like moving folks from parks and trails, and so I'm just as frustrated as anyone else. The location that was brought up on Cross, I think became a distraction to the need of an emergency shelter. We can have a shelter with wraparound services that provide mental health, job training, alcohol abuse, supportive services, and others. And I think one of the things that I was a little disappointed with was the homeless committee that was tasked with dealing with locations. So that's why I was very glad that I got a majority of the council to support me in taking away that issue and bringing it to the council. And in the future meetings, the council will develop the criteria as to where some of these shelters can be placed. And I think it provides for the public to have a voice and input in that process.
Thank you, Mayor Segala. Clara Bernardo, same question, please.
You know, I've always hated the word homeless, because most of these people, they're not on the streets because they're homeless, and I'm not saying all of them, but the majority of them, I'm going to say that's more displaced. They're lost in their journey of life and where they're going. They've either come across the drug issues, or there's some mental issues, or whatever's going on at home that they choose to not be home. So we need to decipher which are the ones that are needing the right help, which are the ones that are really homeless because of certain circumstances that have happened in their life, which are the ones that are needing the mental help. Those are the ones that we've got to decipher. We can't just categorize them all under homelessness, because that's not what this is. And as far as the location, you're putting them in an area of citizens that have been there a long time. You have, I mean, kids that have been raised in that neighborhood and have stayed there in that neighborhood, and here we are, we're just going to not even give them a choice and just kind of bunch that, you know, homeless into right in their neighborhood without a choice. We need to be able to give them a choice and where it's going to go.
Thank you very much, Clara. Okay, the next question, and when we're finished with this question, when we're finished with this question, we're going to take a five-minute break. The next question is, what are the tools the city can bring to the table to promote economic development in all areas of the city, including your vision for downtown? We're going to start that question with Clara Bernardo.
We need to bring in some developers from the city of Visalia. I mean, whoever kind of generated that main street would be nice to kind of give us some ideas on what we can do here. I mean, it's that simple, it's not that complicated. You need to go down to these towns that have really gotten their towns busy and going. We have focused a lot on the outlet center, which is beautiful and we attract, but let's give our citizens here something to go to, too, besides just shopping. I mean, I would love to see more activities for kids indoor. I know they have one of the indoor activities downtown there that's been big, is it the Zoom one? I apologize if I'm not saying that correctly, but basically, we need to draw more attention to the citizens to be able to shop downtown, to want to go downtown, eat, play, shop, all of it. And we just need to go to those cities that have drawn and have been successful in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Bernardo. Mayor Segala, same question.
I think what we need to use, the council members in the council need to use the tools that are before them. One is the power of the purse, and two, the ability that we are legislators, which means that we can draft, pass ordinances, a number of other policies that would encourage development in certain parts of the city. You know, when I ran in 2016, my goal was to try to bring development to the west side. Once you cross the railroad tracks, you're in a different world. We don't have any national chains, any national restaurants. We have a lot of great mom-and-pop restaurants, but we need more economic development. So in order to get there, we have to be able to have people feel comfortable in investing, and that's what I've been working on the last four years, is to remove some of the blight, clean some of the alleys, tackle some of the issues, bring street repairs to our, the west side. But we also need to focus on our downtown, and I think one of the things is, we got to stop putting more secondhand stores downtown. We need to encourage nightlife, we need to encourage more restaurants. Hopefully, once we get past this COVID-19, we can work hard to bring downtown back and make it just as good as Visalia's. And I believe in Tulare, not Visalia.
Thank you, Mayor Segala. Okay, that was District One. Now we're going to pop over to District Five, and we're going to start with Patrick Isherwood.
All right. So really, to promote economic development, it comes down to kind of some key point areas. One is to promote Tulare. And as we talked about before, you have to have a Tulare with good healthcare, good law enforcement, good infrastructure, good parks. That means a lot to potential businesses coming here. The other part is, we need to keep our homes affordable. And I think with that, and my relationship is, I'm the only candidate endorsed by the Tulare County Association of Realtors in District Five, I'm endorsed by the Home Builder Affordability PAC, and I'm endorsed and have a relationship with the Building Industry Association. That's the components in the team that helps to bring economic development. I think the other part is, we need to keep our water infrastructure updated, and we need to have our building codes really looked at. That's a hard part for downtown, is those building codes make it so strict. And the last item in all clothes is, we need to have a stable council. When business reps come to our council and see them fighting and see the yelling and screaming, it just turns people away. All those components of the professional council make it work.
Thank you, Patrick. Courtney Oliver, same question, please.
Well, first of all, with downtown, I noticed that we have the downtown dream that is, they seem to be doing an amazing job. I'm excited about attending their event myself on October 10th. I think we need to stick with groups like that that are kind of leading the way and turning things around in that area. I think it would be a good idea for us to follow suit with whatever it is that they're doing. It looks like they have some really great ideas. We also need to make sure that we truly market our city. Let it be known that businesses are welcome here and that they are needed here. I noticed that marketing is really not promoted as much as it should be around here. I have even had, I've even found myself looking for certain types of businesses or different types of service providers, and I've had to literally hunt down the business or the person because we don't utilize the internet and marketing the way that we should. Word of mouth only takes us so far, so we really have to focus on letting it be known that Tulare is here and that we have space for these new businesses.
Thank you, Courtney. Grady Dodson, same question, please. Grady, I think you're muted. At least I can't hear you.
Oh, is that better?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. So when I think about this question, I think about the McDermott House in Lindsay, I think about the sports complex that Visalia just got. And I've always asked myself as a resident here, why can't Tulare do the same? And I believe we can. It's going to take some hard work, but it's also going to take some community partnering, obviously, to find the right developers who have the heart for Tulare. And Courtney did mention that, and I definitely agree. The downtown dream group is an excellent group, they're doing great things. I too hope to get with them and support them as well. The other thing that we need to do is make sure that we put our best foot forward. The Tulare, as a city, we have a lot to offer. We have a plethora of employable workers. We have the type of people who have multi-talented skills to work in many industries. So that is definitely a marketing tool to help economic growth, as well as that we do have a great cost of living and affordable living here in Tulare, as well as a viable hospital now again, and our great school system. So we have a lot to offer to that. Bringing that issue there and also revitalization of downtown is key. We can easily watch our counterparters and bring that back to here as well.
Grady, thank you very much. Mario Flores, same question.
One of the things that I would do is definitely network. One of the biggest things that I believe the councilmen should do is network and bring in investors that want to invest downtown and invest in the city. We have to be able to market our community a lot more, especially with entrepreneurs. Entrepreneurship's growing so much in the last 10 years, and it's going to continue to grow. And so we got to continue to transform our downtown to be a little bit more family-oriented, being able to be focusing on maybe drive-ups, things like that to promote our downtown. A lot of our secondhand stores are starting to transform the way they market things, and I believe that that's a good thing for our downtown. And one of the things that I would do is definitely work with our chamber. I love our chamber, I love our chamber staff, and they're doing some great stuff to transform our downtown and our community, and we got to be able to support them as well.
Thank you, Mario. Councilman Jones, same question, please.
Well, the biggest tools we can use or should use is we should listen to the customer, listen to the people, and let them tell us what type of businesses they would like to see downtown. When we leapfrog develop and we pull resources away from our downtown, and we created a shopping district that was away from our downtown, we did hurt a lot of the shops down there. So we need to listen to them, connect with them, see what brings the traffic back to downtown Tulare. Rooks did a great job with the street fairs, and they were packed with people. And so when we see events like that at the city, we need to support them. We also need to support the existing businesses that have continued to stay downtown, listen to them, and when they say that they have a hard time opening and staying alive, because every time they come to work, they have to clean off their front porch, we really need to take care of them and take care of those businesses. There's a lot of things we can do financially when it comes to grants or incentives, like dis-fee breaks, and we need to do those.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jones. And Steve Harrell, same question, please.
I absolutely agree with going to other cities, Visalia, Whoville, and other ones in this area to see how they have done their downtown. But we don't want Visalia downtown in Tulare, we want Tulare's downtown. One thing that Visalia has is they have a fee-bid downtown along with the Downtown Business Association. We have to encourage our downtown businesses to probably pursue the same route. Development is the key for the downtown. I know a few years ago, they were talking about wanting to make it look like Higera Street in San Luis Obispo. That's not going to happen, that's not going to be Tulare. We have to provide services and the businesses, the opportunities for people to come downtown and shop, shop in the evening, shop at night, be able to go have dinner someplace, and maybe go to a specific store to shop, and then from there, they can go home. But right now, we don't have that, but we can have that if we all come together on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break, but we had so much fun during the first 25 minutes before we were able to broadcast, so I would ask the candidates, please do not disconnect. If you want to put a T-shirt over your camera or mute yourself that time, but please don't disconnect. We had too much fun the first 25 minutes. We will take a five-minute break, we will be back here at... 7:25. Great. See you all back then. See, everybody's making their way back, which is wonderful. Give it an hour. Snark away. All right, is everybody back? I'm showing 7:26 on my computer. If you're not here, raise your hand. Sorry, old teacher joke. Okay. Next question, and first up is going to be Mayor Segala. Okay, so here's the question. What is the number one issue in your district, and what is your plan to address the issue? And what is your plan to address the issue?
Well, when I ran in 2016, my, my whole campaign was about getting our fair share of resources, and I believe that that still continues to be an issue. We've made a lot of segue in regards to investment in terms of streets and lighting. I've asked the city council to put together a master plan on how do we deal with our alleys. There's a lot of dumping that occurs in our alleys. I've also worked hard to try to bring some economic development to the west side, but it all, it all comes with perception. You know, a lot of folks don't want to invest on the west side. You know, we have to work hard to make sure we remove the blight, that as Patrick said, that there are, that folks feel good about themselves investing. And so that's always going to be a challenge, but I think we've come a long way in giving the west side a voice. You know, I'm very proud to be the first mayor to live in the west side in decades, and I think that helps our district. It helps promote a number of things that we can push, and it allows me to work with the fellow council members to, to know that and make them realize that we need to invest in council district one.
Thank you, Mayor Segala. Clara Bernardo, same question, please.
I've lived on the west side for close to almost 30 years now, and I've seen it to where, you know, it started to develop a little bit, and then it kind of just tapered off and not much has happened since then. There's so much repairs that need to kind of happen in that area to even draw attention to that area. I want to see some shopping centers. I want to see more attraction, even, even where the Palace Depot was, the Palace Grocery Store was. I mean, that could have drawn some attention for like a kids' area, a jump house, how they have in Visalia. I mean, we could have done something there to that area. But no, we just kind of put more convenience stores, more convenience stores, more liquor stores on the corners, and seems like, well, that's tax money that's coming in. Well, that's not always good money. I mean, we don't always need that type of money for our west side. We need something to kind of draw the attention of east side, south side, north side to come to our side, just like we have the same intention to want to go to the east side and shop. We need to draw that same attention to the west side.
Thank you, Clara. Next, we're going to jump to District 3, and Steve Harrell, same question, please.
The thing I'm hearing from people in the district is lack of a grocery store. With R&amp;N closing, the closest store is either Target or Plaza Palace. A lot of people told me they're going to Visalia R&amp;N shop. I understand that the R&amp;N has sold and there's a potential for something to come in there, but we won't know that until it actually happens. We have seen some improvements in fast food places. All of a sudden, we've had a tremendous increase in both District 3 and District 5 area, but that's not really what the people need in this district. They need those stores that will give them the opportunity to purchase their daily needs with the grocery store. That, that would be the number one item, I would think, right now for District 3 that most people are going to say that, that they would like to see done.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Councilman Jones, same question, please.
Mr. Harrell's correct. A grocery store is a very big deal to the district because of the recent closing of R&amp;N. That store was a cornerstone of the neighborhood for a very long time, and I'm going to work hard to make sure that we fill it. My time on council, I've always listened and connected to the community and then worked hard to deliver their goals, whether it was protecting the seniors inside Piper's Cove or getting Sunrise, the Sunrise Park done. You know, that's the, the District 5 has the biggest money corner at Page and Blackstone other than, than anywhere else in the city. I mean, it's right up there with the Outlet Mall, and we need to finish developing that industrial park, protect those gas stations that bring in so much tax revenue, and repair the Page Overpass. I've promised my district that I will protect it and make sure that the Page Overpass doesn't get closed, and we improve the on/off ramp system there. And then there's a couple of empty lots in my district that I think if the city would buy that, buy that property and then deliver it to a grocery store, we can get it done.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Going to pop over to District 5 now and start with Courtney Oliver, same question, please.
Are you able to hear me?
Courtney, yep. Courtney Oliver.
Okay. So, I don't have one issue. I actually have three that are my top issue. And the first one would be some of the dumping that I've seen and some of the vacant lots in District 5, which I was actually pretty surprised to see. The next issue would be the speeding and lack of safety on Lincoln Street between Cross and Prosperity. I've contacted the Engineering Division about that a couple of months ago, so I don't know if there's something that's going to be done about that. And then the last thing would be the suites that I have seen that are open.
Oh, we lost you. We lost you, Courtney. Now are you back?
The last concern is some of the commercial properties. We have some suites that are open, whether they are for lease or for sale. I would love to see those filled by some businesses that we really need in the area. And that's it.
Thank you, Courtney. Grady Dodson, same question, please.
Yeah, I actually would agree with Courtney. We definitely have some vacant lots and commercial lots as well that we definitely need to get the appropriate businesses that cater to this district. Two things that actually got brought up to me by the constituents as I walked the, the district. Number one, to possibly even look at some possible speed bumps in certain neighborhoods to keep our kids safe. As our city is safe, kids like to play in the streets and whatnot in neighborhoods, and we definitely need to kind of look into that to see if it's viable, doable, and cost effective. Number two, the last thing I'll mention, the lack of parks. We had two failed builders in the Mission Oak District, and we need to get them a park. That, that whole neighborhood does not have a park, and neither do the Greens neighborhood across on the other side of Tullary Avenue. The developers were supposed to build parks, and through the crashing of the system and real estate market, the park was never delivered. And I had a conversation with Rob Hunt, our city manager. We do have a viable plan to bring a park to that district.
Thank you, Grady. Mario Flores, same question.
I think one of the issues that I would definitely focus on, and I see that's one of the biggest issues that we are experiencing in our district, is the, the crime rate kind of skyrocketing in the last few months in District 5 from drugs, gangs, and different issues that we're seeing in our community starting to rise up. There's been shootings in our community, there's been drug busts in our community. And if you really knew our district, these things are starting to really increase in our district. And this is, in the past, was one of the safer areas in Tullary, and now it's starting to increase. And so theft, drugs, and alcohol, I mean, drugs and, and gang-related issues, that's something that I would definitely focus on, because I see there's issues that are starting to increase in our community, and we need to make our district a lot safer than it has been.
Thank you, Mario. Patrick Isherwood, same question, please.
Yeah, District 5 is actually very large. I mean, geographically, geographically, I can't even say that word right. But anyway, it stretches from south of town all the way to north, and it's, has many different areas from Mission Oak and Alpine up to components of Khan School, up to Live Oak School, up to Mission, you know, Mission Valley as well. So, living in the district, there are components of traffic. Folks are really tired of traffic at Morrison over in the Hillcrest area, as well as green space renewal, which are talked about, really smart growth and good growth. Also, people want transparency to the lighting and landscape districts that are really out there and around. And I think with a lot of the development, this, the account, District 5 wants some representation, so every time a vote comes up, it's not always conflict of interest. We want somebody to sit on District 5 who represents the people. And in closing, I would say is that District 5 really believes in Tullary strong. We want, of course, the whole components of everything discussed here. People want it to be a pro-Tullary.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Obviously, you saw the panel there. We were going to pause real quick for a photo, but we've lost two people now. Carlton's back. Who else did we lose? Oh, we, we lost Clara. No, we got Clara.
Courtney Oliver.
We lost Courtney. She comes back. Okay, so we're going to take a quick still photo, so if all of you could smile, please, you won't regret it. And we're done, or at least... That was a good enough opportunity. Thank you all very much for your indulgence. Question number seven, and we're going to kick this question off with Councilman Jones. The question is, what do you think is the proper balance between property rights and code enforcement to keep neighborhoods and commercial districts attractive and property values high?
So, the, the proper balance would be a healthy regulation system. For example, you know, we, we don't want to just allow any type of building that becomes dangerous to the, the community or the people that would be using that business. And then we don't want regulations so stiff to where they discourage and hurt a business. So, that's where you find that balance. And then the customers are, are going to also define that balance. If a business comes in and it's not good, not safe, not clean, the customers will be the ones that determine if that business survives. So, as long as, as a city and a government body, we provide regulation that are healthy and supportive and not over-regulate to where it hurts the business, but we set that balance line where it's safe for the people in our community to go in and, and use those businesses. And then there's the entire ADA complaint that we got to remember.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Steve Harrell, same question, please.
If you look at the ballot initiatives, there is at least two of them on there right now that are certainly infringing on individual property rights if they're successful. You have to be able to ensure that people have their rights, their property, but still comply with the law, and that's a very touchy area to be into. Again, in walking areas, I encountered a problem in a vacant lot. I made a couple of phone calls. Code enforcement took care of it for the, for the people in that residential area. It's, it's extremely difficult, especially with the homeless situation when you're talking about the downtown area, because we see the same issues day after day after day that affect the businesses downtown. Code enforcement goes out, tries to deal with it, the problem's running back again. Those issues downtown are not going to be resolved or taken care of until we resolve the homeless issue that affects the downtown. Everything else, we can, we can work with it.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Going to pop over to District 1 now, and Clara Bernardo, same question, please.
I basically think that we need to make sure that the businesses that are coming in to the areas aren't affecting residents. I know that, you know, even noise level for some of the residents of trucks that park behind their homes in BC Street, you know, and, and residential streets, that when they go to start their trucks up in the morning, it causes a lot of noise. So, we need to kind of make sure that whatever type of businesses it is, it's not getting too close to the residents, that it's going to affect them. We need to make sure the businesses that are coming in, it's not going to take away from the thriving businesses that are already here now, and it's not going to hurt them. We just basically need a wide range of different types of businesses to come in. We need to already give them structure before they even come into this business, and we need to do our homework before we even allow them to come into our area. We need to make sure that wherever they're actually coming from or wherever corporation and such, we need to do basically our history on them and go to their town where they have other businesses like theirs and see how they're working.
Clara Bernardo, thank you very much. Mayor Segala, same question, please.
I mean, it's a great question. We have to find the balance between the private sector and the public sector. And the public sector is through the code, code enforcement. Each one has a role. Property owners need to be responsible for their properties, they need to keep them up, they need to remove blight, and they need to do their part. It's called being responsible. The public sector is going to fill that void when it becomes a nuisance. You know, the goal is to help increase property values. A home and a property is an investment that needs to yield a return for those that invest in it. Code enforcement should be used to improve the quality of life. You know, I get a lot of calls about blight, about abandoned vehicles, about motorhomes, on, of people parking on their grass. So, code enforcement is a tool to help increase property values, but it also cannot be a tool that limits property rights. So, having that balance between responsibility and making sure we do our part as a city government to make our homes look better, our business look better, is going to improve property values.
Courtney Oliver, same question, please. Looks like you're frozen on screen, Courtney.
How about now?
Can you hear? We can hear you.
Keeps going on and off for some reason. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, as far as the property rights for homeowners, I'm assuming that's what you're speaking of, I think that the property rights and the code enforcement should somehow be guided by how, how well it's going to allow a property owner to respect their neighbors. I'm noticing that there are some neighborhoods where there are people that are actually running businesses that create a lot of noise from their home, and I think that's a problem. I think that's something that code enforcement should definitely be addressing or be called on, because our residents are for us to live and enjoy and have peace and quiet. It's not for loud noises and machinery. As far as the commercial businesses, we just need to make sure that they're not too close to the residential areas. We need to make sure that the businesses are not causing lots of extra sounds and too much traffic with the big trucks and all that good stuff going through just a normal neighborhood. They need to be more so in the outskirts or in a commercial or industrial area. We just have to be really careful with it.
Thank you very much. Grady Dodson, same question, please.
Well, I would say it's, uh, it definitely is the age-old issues, I think, that a lot of cities have, to find the right balance between, you know, again, our private sector, whether it's commercial and/or personal ownership of residents, and as the public sector. But at the end, at the end of the day, it has to be a yin and the yang, it has to coexist. We have to find the right balance. We do need our code enforcers, as stated earlier by other folks, you know, whether it's noise, whether it's cleanup, whether it's vacancies, abandonments, vehicles, you name it, we got to have the code enforcements to bring that. As much as it is, even like our, our last few years, we had a water enforcement. So, there's a lot of things that we necessarily may not like, but it does serve a greater good, because at the end of the day, we do want to make sure, and as a homeowner myself, there's no prouder moment I had when me and my wife could finally buy a home and provide for our family and my children. So, I definitely want to see my own home stay a good value as best it can, but it has to be the right balance. It has to be one of those things that we balance it out so the greater good, and also to take a look at the zones and make sure they are properly spaced out.
Thank you, Grady. Mario Flores, same question, please.
I definitely want to echo a lot of what everyone's been saying, is finding that balance, but I think it's being able to communicate and build relationships with our code enforcement to be able to just make sure that when we see things happen, we, we take quick action and make sure that we are protecting business owners, we're taking care of our property, people that own their homes and different areas in our community. Making sure that we act fast is probably the biggest thing that I would do, is making sure that we communicate and act fast to make sure that everyone feels safe in the city of Tullary.
Thank you, Mario Flores. Patrick Isherwood, same question, please.
Yes, the city of Tullary has many ordinances on the books, and I think really the, as been mentioned about the proper balance between property rights and code enforcement, we have a board that deals with this very issue. It's the Building Appeals Board, and I'm currently the chairman of that board for the city of Tullary, appointed by the Tullary City Council. And we work through those appeals when a property owner has an issue between either planning or through code enforcement or the Building and Development Committee. But it really, I think, comes back to, and where it's been kind of lost, is the collaboration of bringing our street team, so our trash and public kind of lost is the collaboration of bringing our street team, so our trash and public refuse, bringing the police in, um, bringing the code enforcement and the fire. We need, me being on the council wants to return to having that collaborative committee that addresses our alleys, that looks at those vacant buildings. Um, we're for property, property rights, but when it's rad-infested or other ordinance issues, we have to address that. And I think we just need to put that on the table and see what the priority is, and, and we can hit that head-on.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, uh, we're going to go now to a question from the viewing audience. And to kick that off will be Grady Dodson. Here's the question. And, and this isn't just for Grady. You'll all get your chance. Uh, if you were elected, how will you reach out or interact with members of your district to get their opinions on topics?
Awesome. So number one, I've already started that again by going door-to-door and opening up the lines. I've actually shared flyers with my, uh, actual number and have had continued conversations throughout this campaign process with a lot of our district folks here. However, I would like to expand this, and this is, I'm so excited. So I am a tech bee, so I, I, I'm very tech savvy. One of the things we can definitely do is still a page out of our local city school district. So we can actually have everybody, including not only my district, but the whole city. You can actually sign up to have electronic messages sent to you via, you know, via, uh, text messaging as well as emails. It's about time to take Tulare into the 21st century of technology. It's something that the school district has been doing a great job. There is for school parents out there, you get messages from your principal, you get messages from your teachers. Software that's out there, it's very user-friendly, it's very affordable, it's not a huge cost. The city definitely can afford to do this. It's an investment to keep the line of transparency and accountability. And as a board member, this is a big, if I'm elected, it's a big priority that I'll be bringing up.
Thank you, Grady. Uh, Mario Flores, same question, please.
So I, I would say the answer to that question is a lot of social media, a lot of, uh, Google Docs, Google Forms that I would do. A lot of the things that I've already implemented in my campaign, uh, to be able to communicate with our district. I think one of the biggest things, I think Grady said it perfectly, is being able to transition into the 21st century, uh, as a board. Uh, it's very important because we're trying to reach the next generation of leaders and community members. We gotta be able to adapt to whatever they need. And so that's something I would definitely focus on, and, uh, being able to just communicate and meet with people as well, uh, being able to be, I work in the city, I live here, my kids go to school here. I'm very much available here in the city. And so anytime anybody wants to meet, communicate, be able to be accessible to that.
Thank you, Mario. Patrick Isherwood, same question, please. Patrick, you're muted, I think.
Sorry about that. So I think what we need to implement is, uh, community action teams. Our redevelopment board used to have this down in the Alpine District. And I think we need to bring these back. So for District Five, a community action team that brings people of, of different backgrounds, uh, together. I think everybody wants to know that they have a voice, that they have an identity, and that they're engaged. And I think my work experience with Self-Help Enterprises has me working with people of different backgrounds and different socioeconomic statuses across the region of our valley. Let's bring that right here in District Five. And I think through that, is we can do that through health fairs, we can do that through our school functions, and also we can have a business roundtable. So a community action team has a really diverse component to it. Let's get that together quarterly. Let's make that happen. And I think everybody would feel that their voice would have more of a, a, a representation related to their background and their neighborhood.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, Courtney Oliver, same question, please. Uh, again, since this one isn't written down for anybody, I'm happy to repeat it if you want me to.
You can repeat it. Can you repeat it, please, Kevin?
Absolutely. If you were elected, how will you reach out to or interact with members of your district to get their opinions on topics?
Well, as of, as of now, I've already been communicating with them via social media. I have people that either send me a friend request or just send me a message and I communicate with them that way. They've also, uh, made me aware of some groups that they have established. Um, the Delago area has a, has a group, Alpine has a group. I'm also open to Zoom meetings as well as meeting in places like clubhouses that may be in their gated community or some other, um, meeting areas that we could agree on would be a good place, whether it's some type of recreation center or whatever, but, um, I'm definitely, um, committed to making sure they get the information as well as I would like to encourage them to attend the council, um, meetings once, you know, space is a little bit more, um, available since we don't have the space due to COVID. So it definitely can get done.
Thank you, Courtney. Mayor Segala, same question, please.
That's a great question. Thank you for that question. I think one of the things that I would work on, uh, to establish is to develop a, a district advisor committee that's comprised of business, education, community leaders, to try to work on some of the prevalent issues in the district, uh, like more economic development, blight, a, a number of things. Um, and I also would, uh, work, uh, to continue to, to make sure that, uh, I provide my personal cell phone to folks. You know, I have no qualms about being called or texted about trying to address, uh, district issues. That's what we're here for. Uh, I would work to host, uh, some office hours. Uh, I would continue to conduct forums. I, I was the first mayor in a long time uh, to do a public forum, and we focused on homelessness. So I would continue to do that, whether I'm mayor or not in the next round. And one of the things that I wanna work on, uh, is to try to develop a, a local government 101 Citizens Academy. You know, a lot of folks don't understand the different levels between what a council member does and a senator or a congress member. And I think it's gonna be great if we did a quarterly, uh, meeting downtown where people can learn who does what with the local governments.
Thank you, Mayor Segala. Clara Bernardo, same question, please.
I have to all put up a billboard with my phone number and my contact email. I mean, I can go very old-school if we need to. Or I can use the technology that, um, you know, some of these other candidates have been talking about. We could even go as simple as everybody gets a water bill, put the information for your district on that. Who is your district? Um, you know, council member right now and where's their contact information. I'd even set up a quarterly meetings at the parks, which we definitely need more on our district. But, you know, at, at Pleasant, and we got it at Moké and stuff at those parks there, where I'd set up a tent and let them know, hey, you wanna come talk to me? What do you got? I'm ready for you. You know, just kinda open it up, old-school, not just technology, because not everybody has the technology that's out there that's needed for all this. So I'd kinda go in both routes.
Thank you, Ms. Bernardo. Steve Harrell, same question, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad Clara made reference to old-school, because that's exactly what I am. No doubt the technology is here to stay, but nothing beats a face-to-face meeting with someone to either hear their problem, work out their problems with them, address their concerns. You can't do that as we're doing this tonight. It just does not work. As I walk the neighborhoods, uh, I stop at one house, I may talk to somebody that's 20 years old. And the next house, I may talk to somebody that's my age or older. In each case, we communicate without any problems whatsoever. I've had, uh, people call me at home already. I've made myself available at any time for any issues. If they have any questions, call me, I'll be more than glad to answer them and discuss any issues that they might have or problems. Like I said earlier, I've already directed about three different issues to the appropriate city departments to deal with, to solve for these people. I'm always gonna be available. I prefer to do it face-to-face, but COVID has changed a lot of things.
Councilman Jones, same question, please.
Uh, well, you know, we kinda have to adjust to the times. Uh, normally, this is, we would be in the, in the heart of our local football season. And I would be out at the games, talking to people, and that's part of the, the cool thing about being born and raised here is everyone knows you and they know how to get in touch with you. With the changing of times, I had to grow my, uh, social media footprint, and I have a huge one. Uh, anytime someone sends me a message, uh, I get back to them as fast as possible. And anyone, anytime someone needs to call me and they know someone that knows me, they know that when they call me, I show up. And, uh, I show up not just for my district, but for this entire city. I've been to neighborhoods when they couldn't get in touch with their council member, or they didn't get a response, and I show up to represent them. And then there's events like, one of my favorite is Tulare United. And it was a huge group of people that just loved Tulare, and after we had an amazing service, we would get together and talk about real issues in our city. And I'm just, I'm working with a group now, Tulare 180, which is a group of youth, uh, kids that are, wanna be very involved.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Right, our last question from the, um, for the evening before we head into closing statements also comes from the audience. And, uh, first person to answer will be Clara Bernardo. So here's the question. How would you address the infrastructure, roads, maintenance, public safety, and good-paying jobs within the quickly growing population of the city?
If I'm understanding the question correctly, I need to, we need to focus on the busiest streets right now and getting those repaired, the facets. It's damaging a lot of, um, a lot of the vehicles, a lot of the tires. Uh, we get a lot of complaints from that. Uh, we need to work on the older streets, um, also, so they can lead into, uh, the businesses that are already currently here too. Um, you know, and, and even just sidewalks alone. There's so many sidewalks that are not completed on our west side. Where we're kinda losing focus on the streets and the maintenance that's needed for an ever-growing, uh, population, ever-growing businesses that are in this town. I don't think we've kinda kept up with the demands that are needed to keep up the structures, um, of the streets and, and, um, and the sidewalks and stuff for the businesses that are coming. We kinda just do these little partial sidewalks and don't worry about the rest of them and where they lead to.
Thank you, Ms. Bernardo. Mayor Segala, same question, please.
Um, obviously, I think infrastructure and investing in our roads are, it's a big, big part of our capital improvement budget. Uh, we plan five years ahead, and we set aside money to try to fix some of the roads. As many of you know, you've seen Cart Mill. That turned out to be a great project. You know, we, uh, just recently, uh, improved the intersection of Tulare West. The intersection of Property and West is next. Uh, Councilwoman Sayer and I fought vigorously to make sure that there be a new signal that's gonna come in next spring there at Property West to give some economic development to that area. I'm very proud to have stood up to the governor in making sure that we had the funding to expand the 99 freeway. And I've been very proud to support the South-Tulare Interchange. It's gonna make a big, big difference for South-Tulare and, uh, continue to grow. And I think that we need to make sure we fix our potholes, you know, because that's the bread and butter that we do as council members. And I'm very proud of all the number of miles that have been fixed in our city, including a number of them on the west side.
Thank you, Mayor Segala. Councilman Jones, same question, please.
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Absolutely. How would you address the infrastructure, roads, maintenance, public safety, and good-paying jobs within the quickly growing population within the city?
Uh, that, that's a lot of, uh, that's like a three-hour question. And, um, so, you know, to, and, address the infrastructure, uh, that comes out of our savings. We have to, we shouldn't address something today and think we're gonna build it tomorrow. Uh, we definitely have to know what, what issues are coming up. And that's by saving money and saving by building a healthy reverb, um, having a healthy capital improvement program, and then protecting the money with wasteful spending. Uh, we really need to protect the outflow of cash going out of our city so we can make those type of healthy investments. Um, as the, everything else is connected to safety. Not only the safety of our people, the safety of the people who live here, who visit here, um, as, as far as the, the, the condition that we keep our streets and, and neighborhood. And then, uh, we have to listen to our community. I'm getting a lot of complaints about our city, our city streets and neighborhoods being dark. And it's just been real hard to get projects done when it comes to redoing street lights. And so that's one of the things I wanna get done.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Um, Steve Harrell, same question, please.
The new interchange is proposed on 99, and that has been in works for over 30 years. We're still waiting to see what happens. There's been nothing that I've heard that addresses the feeder streets. We're gonna go into it. Uh, Foster Drive, Angling Road, and South Mooney at the curve, that has probably a crash at least once a week in that area. At one time, that stretch was rated as the most dangerous stretch of roadway in Tulare County with the highest number of fatalities in Tulare County. Mooney Boulevard was supposed to have been extended straight south to meet up with Angling Road. That never happened. This probably is the highest traffic area of any in the city. But yet, all of the city's efforts have been towards Cart Mill, and this area has been neglected. You see the traffic lined up every morning and every evening. I'm sure Mr. Jones has seen it repeatedly, just like I have. Certainly, the signals that flyers put in has helped. It's still a very dangerous situation there. They need to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Grady Dodson. Same question, please.
Yeah, so again, uh, to echo a lot of what's been said, we definitely need to look at prioritizing which streets and intersections, and obviously, we need to look at those that are busiest first to, uh, put at the top of the list of our prioritizing. However, it was said earlier by one or if not a couple of other candidates, uh, in order to do this, we gotta have some funding. We, we gotta make sure that we do plan for the future and spend accordingly and reduce our, our wasteful spending. That's a big, big thing. Uh, at the same time, when it comes down to the roads and, and everything else, uh, if the roads ain't correctly, you know, our, our police force can't uh, have good call-response times. I'm in the healthcare field. Our ambulance groups, uh, have to take detours to get to certain places. All of those roads have a huge effect on how we operate and keep our city not only safe, but also we keep it healthy. So the roads and the streets is a big priority. But again, I think partnering with our transportation department to make sure we prioritize them, give them the support they need, uh, is a big factor in being successful in proper roads and streets. Um, and that's a big part of what we need to do as city council members.
Thank you, Grady Dodson. Mario Flores, same question, please.
I read a quote one time from President George Bush when he visited Tulare. He said, "We have two things in the city of Tulare. That's a lot of churches and a lot of potholes." And one of the things that I would definitely do is really work on those issues. Um, and first of all, first thing that I would do, um, is work with our council. I mean, we gotta be able to communicate and see our budget and see what, where we can spend the most money in and be able to make these improvements that we're talking about. I think, uh, if we can't work together, we, we're not gonna be able to find those areas of, of, of solutions in those areas. So that's something that I would definitely focus on.
Thank you, Mario. Patrick Isherwood, same question, please.
Yeah, I think first, uh, regarding infrastructure to take roads, I think one of the great things that we've had happen that has supported Tulare in the region is, is Measure R. And back in 2000, I was part of the Transportation Board for the county, and I was part of the original creation of the Measure R team. And I think that synopsis brought together a funding mechanism that over the years has paid for grade separations. It paid for numerous big capital project improvements. And I think that experience brings to today full circle to say, now on infrastructure, we need the capital improvement plan, but we need a strategic plan that works with our foe, our, our roads, as well as water and underground infrastructure. We need to work with developers and how that plan of, of development impact fee is gonna be structured over the years. And third, also important for infrastructure is water. Uh, the state of California is brutal and keeps hitting us with continuous regulations, but we have sigma coming up. And our urban water supply is another important issue. We have to keep our, our budget and our water rates all stable to improve our water supply.
Thank you, Mr. Isherwood. Courtney Oliver, same question, please.
Can you please repeat the question?
Absolutely. How would you address the infrastructure, roads, maintenance, public safety, and good-paying jobs within the quickly growing population within the city?
The first way I would address it would definitely be starting with the budget. Next would be seeking out the grants and the funds that we can get to work on all of those different areas. I would also make sure with the roads that we're not working on all of these roads at the same time. Like others have mentioned, we need to prioritize. We can't, you know, work on two different main roads at the same time. It's gonna cause too much confusion, too much delay, too much frustration. So we need to figure out what's gonna be at the top of the list. As far as the good-paying jobs, I think there are some... We need to address a few things. I, I've looked at some of the city jobs, for instance, and some of the pay doesn't seem quite right. I used to work in human resources and person- I used to work in human resources and personnel and payroll, and the pay seems a little bit low even for Tulare. I think that there are some incentives and extra pay that, for instance, maybe police officers should be receiving. There are two and a half percent that they're receiving, like for education, that seems a bit low for me for someone that has invested so much money in school.
Courtney Oliver, thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on now to the closing statement. You may take up to two minutes. And, um, I'm just going to go straight down the list. We're going to start with District One, then District Three, and then to District Five. Two minutes? Yeah. Right. So, uh, Clara Bernardo, you are, you are up.
Basically, um, I just wanted to make myself more involved in the community and make a difference. There's so much that needs to be addressed in District One, and living there for almost 30 years, I, uh, believe that I have seen what has come, what has gone, what needs to be done, uh, what changes, what would help. And because I'm, I'm not going anywhere as it is, um, I'm basically, I'm born here, raised here, I'm staying here. And I, somebody asked me the other day, is, uh, "So what after this? You know, what's your goal after this?" And I said, "There is no after this, this is it." I mean, I basically have committed myself to helping and doing, making a difference in my community, and that's where I'm at. I'm not going to do anything different than that. I don't have a political agenda. I'm not a politician, and not to say that that's good or that's bad, but that's not who I am. Um, my commitment is to District One and to making a difference there, and wherever I can make a difference throughout the city, then I will do that too. Um, but my mission was to make a difference in my district, and that's why I'm here. As far as any other, um, agenda after this, I don't have. Um, I plan to still be a mother, plan to still be a wife, plan to still, um, you know, shop in my community, plan to still do the fund, my foundation, and any other thing that needs to be addressed and, and helped in this community, that's just where I'm at. And so, vote for me.
Thank you, Clara Bernardo, District One. Jose Segala, also District One, your closing statement.
Thank you, uh, first of all, everybody who put this, uh, forum together, appreciate the opportunity to reach out to voters, not only across the city, but in my district. This is going to be a very important election. You know, it's a whole different world with the pandemic, everybody's going to be receiving their vote-by-mail ballots, and they're going to have it at home, so you have the power to make the difference, not only in my council district, but in our state, our county, in our nation. So we urge everyone to vote. And also a shout out to those folks who are working hard to do the census, make sure you fill out the census as well. This is a, this is going to be an election that's going to allow us to move forward and not backwards. You know, I'm very proud of the leadership that I provided in the city in stabilizing our government, having permanent the police chief, city manager, city attorney, and the role that I play in the majority of the council to move our city forward. Integrity, I worked very hard to make sure that we're transparent and accountable. You know, I worked hard to make sure that we put in policies that make council members just as accountable as our city employees when it comes to credit cards, when it comes to a number of other issues. I'm very proud of, uh, the work that I've done to save our hospital. You know, I have the experience, uh, to make sure that we stay on track in terms of our budgets, and we work to make sure that we continue to improve the life in our cities and our quality of life in our neighborhoods. I'm very proud that as a council member, the last four years, I've helped support police and fire departments with the resources they need and the equipment to protect our neighborhoods and families, to provide leadership, address a lot of issues right now during the coronavirus pandemic, and issues that impact our communities and businesses, to bring attention to the issue of homelessness, through the creation of an ad hoc committee comprised of community leaders that are working hard to address that issue, advocate for city services, street repairs, potholes, parks, clean water, streetlights in our neighborhoods, help approve a city budget that balance, that is balanced and focuses on priorities of residents without sacrificing valuable city services. And I bring leadership integrity to, and experience to this race, and I hope that I can count on your vote November the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Segala. Moving now to District Three, um, we will have a closing statement from Steve Harrell.
I have roughly 45 years' experience in public service. I've done everything from law enforcement to emergency medical services, to private consulting on business and security issues. I think I've probably covered just about every public safety area that's possible. I've chaired my numerous committees for the county, which I still chair one committee now. One thing that I always had at my, no matter what my job was, was integrity and professionalism. There's nothing more important than your integrity. You have to be able to do what you say you're going to do. You live up to that, you have a responsibility to do that. I've heard people say that the council is dysfunctional. I disagree with that. There's some issues with the council that need to be addressed to make it more cohesive to get your work done for the people of Tulare. That can't be done if they're divisive, and that's where they're at right now. So maybe it's time for some changes to be made. Get some new thoughts, new ideas, new programs brought to the council. It's going to make the public, I think, a little more interested in what's going on, and certainly is going to, uh, make them more secure in fact that the council is there working for them. I think I can bring all those things to the council. I've certainly displayed them before. One of my responsibilities in the police department was that I went out and I handled issues. I could talk to anyone, any group, I still can do that, and walked away with a resolution. I'm confident I can do that same thing, provide that same level of integrity and professionalism and knowledge to the council. If I've been given that opportunity by the voters of District Three, thank you.
Thank you, Steve Harrell, District Three. Uh, Councilman Jones, District Three, your closing statement.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, all the organizations that, uh, put this forum together. Um, I'm glad I was able to, uh, participate without getting a emergency call here. Um, but I, I just want to say that, uh, you know what, my, my love and passion for Tulare hasn't changed since the, the time I grew up here, for the time I worked for the city of Tulare as a firefighter, um, from the first time that I was sworn in as a council member to today. Uh, you know, it's, um, times have changed, and, uh, hold on. All right, so times, sorry, our engine got a call. Times have changed, but, uh, you know, I can honestly say that my heart and love for the city of Tulare stayed the same. Uh, you know, I've, I've worked on council with, uh, people who have coached me as a kid growing up, and now I'm watching a, a younger generation step in, you know, and they're people that I've coached. Um, uh, one thing that, that I want to make sure, when it's all said and done, whether I'm here, uh, in the next month or not, that when I walk through my neighborhood, when I walk through the city of Tulare, whether it's around Lincoln School or on West Tulare, that the, the people who, uh, put me in this position are proud of me when, when I step away from it. Um, and that's more important to me. It's more important to me than how much money I collect, it's more important than who endorses me, and it's more important than the, the negative things that are said about my passion and work ethic. Uh, I have 12 years on this council, I love it, hold on.
You can continue, are you finished?
Yeah, no, sorry, we, uh, there was another call coming in for our engine. So, I mean, and what I'm saying is, uh, you know, I, my, my passion isn't going to change, and I'm not going to be distracted by, um, the negative shots that come. Sorry about that. I'm not, I'm not going to change, stop because of the distractions. I'm going to keep working hard, I'm going to keep connecting with people, and, uh, you know, and, you know, it's, I don't, I don't get into it like I'm running against someone else, I'm running to represent my district, and I'm definitely running to represent the city of Tulare.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. We're going to move now to District Five, and we will start closing statements in District Five with Grady Dodson.
Uh, again, thanks to everyone who, uh, has put this forum on. Again, it's a great opportunity for all the viewing public, whether they're currently live, um, to those who replay it later. Uh, again, uh, I, I'm born and raised in this city like many other candidates. Uh, my, my love and my affinity, uh, passion for this community grows each and every day that I am here. Uh, like many people, I, I cho- chose to come back. I turned down job opportunities to be across on the east coast and south and north and west of our country to come back home. Uh, coming back home was the best decision I've ever made for me and my family. And speaking about my family, it just comes back to who I am. Um, the Dodson family in this community has a long legacy of servitude, starting with my grandfather, who's 50 years of ministry and pastoring churches here in town, to my father, who's a pastor and a police chaplain for over 15 years, as well as a chaplain to the fire department. Our support and love to our law enforcement and, uh, fire department is just none, uh, second to none. Uh, at the same time, my siblings and I all live in this area. We all are teachers, we're social workers, we're, um, sports enthusiasts. We do a lot of things to help economics and being a part. My brother and I started Team Superstars Basketball Organization to help mentor kids. We've sent over 100 kids to college on full ride scholarships. That, uh, coupled with economic growth at hosting tournaments here in town. Uh, at the end of the day, we just want to be, I want to make sure that people know that I'm a servant leader first. I believe in servitude is the way to go, and leading with my heart and hands and my education and skills helps me to do what I need to do. Uh, I've, I've worked the last 13 years in healthcare. Uh, I'm an administrator, I oversee hundreds of patients and the vital increments of policy changes and things like that to help the healthcare of those people. Surely if those hundred people can trust me with their life, with their life, I'm sure that I could be trusted to help run our city, to bring integrity, dignity back to our city council, to help us continue to serve you, great people of District Five, and the whole entire city that we live in. This is Grady Dodson, please cast your vote for me.
Thank you, Grady Dodson, District Five. Next, we'll move to Mario Flores, also running in District Five.
So yes, I, so I've, I love this city, uh, with a passion and a desire to definitely see the city transform. Um, I've been in the trenches since I was 20, um, I'm 32, I'm a young leader, definitely want to see, uh, leadership developed here in the city. And so, myself, I'm running not because of a title, I'm not running because of a position, I'm running because I definitely want to see revival and transformation in our community. Because I have been in the trenches, I've been in different sectors and different industries in our community, and I've seen the issues and I've seen the needs, and I definitely believe that the city of Tulare, uh, can find solutions when the right leadership is in place. And so, uh, a vote for me is, is a vote for the community, a vote for me is, is, is a vote for transformation and revival in the, in the city. Um, I believe in, in a lot of the things that we're starting to do, and I believe the future is bright. I come with a lot of experience, like I said, in different industries. Um, I come, I have my bachelor's degree from Fresno Pacific in Business, and I understand how things are developed and worked, and how to create action plans to eventually see some of the goals and dreams that we have to actually become reality. And so, um, a vote for me is, is a vote for Tulare, so thank you.
Thank you, Mario Flores, District Five. Next, Patrick Isherwood, also District Five.
Yeah, in closing, I did really want to share with their neighbors and people of District Five and people of Tulare, uh, that my heart is here. Rather than being a politician, I've been a, a community servant, many dynamics over the years. I grew up in Tulare, and I attended, uh, our local public schools, my wife Crystal and I, uh, called Tulare Home. My children attend school with your children, between Mission Valley to Alpine Vista and all the areas of our wonderful district. For many years, I worked as a clerk at our local grocery store. Grew up here, put myself through college, and I currently work for Self-Help Enterprises. I love Tulare and want to make the city you and your family are proud of. I'm running because I have the experience and qualifications to help our city move forward responsibly, and we need to move forward through these tough times. My extensive experience and community accomplishments, I think, distinguish me from other candidates. Over the last 25 years, I've successfully served the community through such posts of the Tulare Redevelopment Agency, the Tulare Planning Commission, the Tulare Building Appeals Board, but more importantly, like many, involved right there with neighbors and families from Rotary, helping out with community projects, to Boy Scouts, to serving in our Mission Oak Engineering Advisory Board, working with many students. And I think with that is in understanding and working with other families, that in October of last year, I took six seniors from Mission Oak to a Tulare City Council meeting. And at that city council meeting, it erupted into just an unfortunate display. And I think that for all of us is that drive, that we want to have that consumer confidence. Consumer confidence is what brings the circle together. Can, confidence from our ag industry, our business industry, our youth, our city, and all the components you hear tonight. We have an enormity of issues that needs to be addressed, and I hope to address.
Thank you, Patrick Isherwood, District Five. And finally, to close it out tonight, Courtney Oliver from District Five. I can see your mute symbol is on. There you go.
I think it's going to work now. Um, thank you all for hosting this forum, I deeply appreciate.
Now you're muted again, Courtney.
Can you hear, can you hear me out? Kevin?
Yes, ma'am. Now you went back to mute.
All right. I think I can try now. Um, thanks again for the, you know, hosting this forum, I appreciate it. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share who we are. Um, first and foremost, integrity is important to me. I know we hear that word all the time, and sometimes people don't mean it, but it means a whole lot to me. Um, and when I see that it's not being, um, taken advantage of, or, 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 or when it's not really, uh, a respected trait to have, it's, it's quite irritating, to be honest. So, um, it's one of the things that's first and foremost for me. I want the people of Tulare to know that they have someone that actually cares and that is, you know, that welcomes, um, their concerns, anything that they feel that is an issue, and I want all generations to feel that. I don't want anyone to feel that they're too young to have an opinion, that their, um, issue is not valid to me because they are 18 or 19 or 20. I don't want anyone to feel that because they're 60, 70, or 80, that their issue or concern is not valid. Um, I also want each class level to know that their issues and concerns are also valid. It's very important to me that, um, we, we, we really unify as a city. Um, I think that that's something that is easy to get away from because sometimes we get too caught up into the politics of things, and we forget that we are all people. And, um, you know, we have families to take care of and, uh, finances that we want to make sure that are at a certain level, things like that. Um, we want safety in our communities. A lot of us, if we really sat down and talked to one another, we would realize that we, a lot of us want the same things. And I'm looking forward to supporting the ag industry, our public safety, as well as the concerns for parks in the different areas.
Thank you, Courtney Oliver, District Five. Okay, so in closing, first of all, I want to thank our audience for sticking with us for the first, um, very unpleasant 25 minutes while you waited for us to sort through some difficulties. It's a new platform for most of us. Second, I want to thank all the candidates for stepping up and trying to make a difference in our great city. It's one thing to complain from the sidelines, it's quite another to throw your hat in the ring and, um, and campaign to make a change, or to keep doing successfully what you've been doing. I want to thank our partners, the Tulare Advanced Register, the League of Women Voters, and SerOptimus International Tulare Chapter. And in closing, I want to remind you all to please go out and vote. Thank you very much.